All in need of order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to again relay the message I sent home to parents. I have already sent it to you. I just wanted to include it for the record in my report. And I do appreciate the committee taking up the mask policy tonight and for supporting my recommendation to continue with masks as a mitigation effort this fall. Just so you do know, the Board of Education did vote today 9 to 1, so it looks like they'll be issuing that tomorrow. I just want to say thank you to our custodians. Each year we restart our schools. We take for granted the gleaming floors and all the hard work our custodians do every day to make our schools safe and clean. I want to recognize all the hardworking men and women of the custodian crew who have moved every piece of furniture at least five times during COVID. They never blinked when we filled the gyms with furniture and then emptied them five months later, and they've just been wonderful in accepting each new task thrown at them during this time. Also, I'd like to thank our food services team. As Mr. Diaz will report tonight, we served many summer meals and provided relief to families over the summer. Thank you to our food services team who worked hard throughout the past year and a half to respond to our city's needs. Teacher of the Year. Again, I want to congratulate Jen Smith, Nancy Maurice, Jackie, Carter Holbrook, and Chris Henry on being selected for Teacher of the Year. We had a ceremony on August 18th to recognize them, as well as finalist Kate Olson from Jarrick. Thank you once again to the Masons for continuing this wonderful tradition. And I included a couple pictures from the ceremony if you weren't able to make it. And I did want to attach a correspondence from the community. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for the superintendent? CNN, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. Food Services, as the superintendent just mentioned, over the summer, this food service program served nearly 14,000 meals via the two open sites and through our delivery routes. The total tally for remote meals served since the start of the pandemic over the last year and a half are 332,000 meals. So again, I echo the gratitude towards the food service staff. Since all students will be attending school in person this fall, remote meals will not be served in FY '22. I did want to remind our families that breakfast and lunch continue being included in the Marlboro Academic Program, no cost. We encourage all students to participate by having breakfast and lunch at school. Now that the school committee and the district has moved to make all school meals permanently free for all students, increased participation directly impacts as a benefit to all of our schools, so please participate. COVID-19 preparedness. The district is well positioned to continue responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Schools are well stocked with all the necessary PPE, and we have processes in place to replenish supplies as needed. Our HVAC consultant has performed an analysis of our systems over the summer, and updated HVAC reports have been posted online. HVAC project. The district is pursuing major upgrades to the HVAC systems at Jarrick and Kane. Mayor Vision has appointed a designer selection committee to assess seven responses to the city's request for proposals, RFPs, that we did earlier this summer. The committee is currently scheduling interviews with the three top-rated respondents. The interviews are scheduled for next week, and the goal is to be ready to begin the HVAC work over the next summer break. Our gratitude is to Commissioner Duval and Chief Procurement Officer Crystal Homie for their leadership and effort in this process. I wanted to reserve a spot tonight for a transportation update, and if the committee will indulge me, I just wanted to read you upgrade updates that I actually prepared this morning because it actually took us some time to get everything ready. So I wanted to make sure that the committee as well as the community understood that transportation services during the first month of school will be challenging due to the national staffing shortage that has really impacted the transportation industry. We currently have all registered students assigned to a route, and we have drivers assigned to every route. That's the good news. But we expect that we'll have a difficult time responding to driver callouts. And let me just give you a little bit of the background. So the district has worked very closely with NRT on a coordinated recruitment effort since this spring. Here are some of the steps that we've taken to try and address this issue. We've offered to pay for CDL training. We're one of the only people in the region doing so. We've also offered a $1,000 retention bonus to CDL drivers from Marlboro. We reached out to our community, to our parent community, a few times over the summer. We reached out to existing staff whose hours could complement driving a bus, for example, night custodians, three-hour food service staff, and translators. We reached out to veteran services agencies, senior service agencies, as well as some vendors who work in this field, so CDL staffing agencies. We also talked to some other transportation vendors that operate around us to see if they had some extra drivers. The efforts that we done, that I just listed, that we did, were in addition to the standard recruiting efforts by NRT. So we worked closely together since the spring, and we did have some success. Right now, we have a few drivers for Marlboro Public Schools that are in training. So we expect that our shortage is time, it's a timing issue, and by the beginning of October, these drivers that are training should be ready to go. In anticipation of a 15% driver shortage, our transportation coordinator Steve Phelan has worked day and night since the beginning of July to develop routes that will utilize up to six fewer drivers than we had originally requested. And I'm very grateful for Steve's work because his work has allowed us to be in a good position, which is where we are right now. And NRT has taken an all-hands-on-deck approach, literally, and they were only able to guarantee that all of our routes would have drivers because they have a couple of dispatchers and, you know, they have a vice president that will be working, that will be driving a bus in Marlboro on September 1st. And again, so far, that is good news. The issue for us will be that once we have a callout, because they are already utilizing so many staff to be on a bus, we will have delays because they won't be ready to respond to that callout as quickly. I just want to be very clear about the plan. There will not be a route that doesn't run in Marlboro. I understand that when that happens, some students can't get to school. The worst-case scenario that I foresee is that buses will be late when this happens. And again, I'm hoping that this will be done by the end of September, so it's hopefully a short-term pain. Again, we understand how critical this is. The team is working very, very hard to make sure that the impact to students and families will be minimal this fall. And I, again, I want to say thank you to Steve Phelan and the NRT team for working as hard as they have over the past month to get us to where we are today. Thank you. That's all. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Ryan.
I have a question. Mr. Diaz, I know that the bus routes are officially posted on the website. That's great. You mentioned that the students were assigned to specific buses. Is there a way for parents to know what bus their child should be on if they live close to, you know, a couple different bus routes?
Thank you for that question. So tomorrow, the schools will be writing emails to students informing each individual student, well, the parents, what bus they're assigned to. We're also going to be writing to folks who did not get a bus assigned to because they didn't register, and there will be an opportunity still to reach out to us and let us know that, you know, they wish to ride the bus. So that communication is happening tomorrow, but you are correct, the bus routes have been posted as of tonight. They're on the website.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. Just for clarity, if I remember correctly, when we were talking in our workshop meeting, just to give an update on transportation, if I remember correctly, you actually had reached out to some of, you know, if you will, our competitors for transportation companies to understand if they actually were seeing a similar situation as far as drivers, a deficit in drivers, correct? And they were also seeing about a 15% or so deficit in their driving staff that they're running into, so this is really something that's much more of a statewide issue, not really just a specific to Marlboro situation, correct?
Correct. Yes, it's actually, right now, it's a national issue. There's 50,000 drivers less than needed throughout the nation.
Okay. I guess I'm saying that more just so that we are all on a level playing field of information from a community standpoint, that it's not necessarily just something specific here to Marlboro. It really is a wider issue.
Yes.
So just like many of the other industries that are affected by not having workers available either. So hopefully patience will ensue for everyone as we all work through it. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? CNN, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. Summer professional development. Marlboro Public School Strategy for Improvement 2.3 states that we will develop clear expectations for all professional learning communities. A specific action of that goal was to train a new cohort of teachers in the Research for Better Teachings collaborative data process. On August 3rd through 5th, approximately 40 teachers and administrators attended the first three days of this training. Throughout the year, this same group will attend another three days of training, and school-based data teams will receive ongoing coaching in their buildings. Opening day professional development. Last March, I shared that all Marlboro school administrators participated in a 10-hour training led by Dr. Kalise Warnum entitled Becoming a Culturally Proficient Leader. This training was designed to prepare school and district administrators to support the work that will need to be done at the classroom, building, and district level over the next few years as we can continue to make educational equity a priority in our schools and our district. August 30th is a professional development day for all Marlboro public school staff. In the morning, Dr. Warnum will deliver a keynote address for all Marlboro public school educators titled Understanding Cultural Proficiency. School-based teams will follow up this session in small groups with the goal of supporting teachers to identify strategies that they can implement in their classroom to promote equity. One example of this would be to share strategies that will invite and involve families into the school and the classrooms. Dr. Warnum will return in October to work with members of the district's anti-bias and anti-racism committee. SO3. Mr. Diaz and I are planning on submitting the district's SO3 application by the end of September. To complete our application, we will be sending out a survey to all parents in the district. We will be asking feedback on how we will allocate the funds to meet the following requirements. We will be telling, sharing some of our plans on how to implement prevention and mitigation strategies aligned with the CDC guidance, for example, air filtration and air quality, how the district will use its 20% set aside to address the academic impact of lost instructional time through evidence-based interventions such as summer learning or summer enrichment programs, extended day, and comprehensive after-school programs or extended school year programs, how the district will spend its remaining SO funds, and how the district will ensure that interventions employed will respond to the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of all of our students, and particularly those disproportionately impacted, including students from low-income families, students of color, English learners, children with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness, children in youth and foster care, and migrated students. Our SO3 use of funds plans will be posted to the Marlboro Public School website within 30 days of receiving the Title III grant application approval notification. Finally, tomorrow morning, approximately 40 new teachers will be attending our district's new staff orientation at the Whitcomb School. Hope some of you will be able to join us and welcome them at 8:30 a.m. Thank you.
Question from the committee. Mr. Crusoe.
Will we be seeing this SO plan before it's applied, the application is sent in?
Yes.
It'll come in front of us as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In a minute or two, we'll be having public participation, so thank you. Any other questions from the committee? CNN, acceptance of the minutes of June 22nd.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on that? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Any public participation? Did it come up and state your name?
Quick question.
You have to.
Sorry, but we got the TV camera going, so. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Isabel. Marlboro, resident. So I was like, what? Now it's good?
Yeah.
Ah, yeah. I think now it's one, two, three. Yeah? I wanted to ask why you mentioned about the doctor which is advising you, all of the staffs, why she is not here today to address some question to the doctor about the guidance or, you know, the school year and to tell about everything, to ask, to respond to our questions, you know? I don't know, it's, thank you. Is clear what I want?
I didn't understand the question.
Yeah.
Are you asking about why Dr. Warnum is?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Doctor Warnum. Could you tell us more specifically, clearly, what the name of the doctor is, to see what is her background and to see who is she, you know? It's, hello? It's working or not?
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah. I'm clear what I said? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So Dr. Warnum is an?
Warnum?
Warnum, W-O-R-N-U-M. She is an educational consultant. She does the special development. That's the type of doctor that she is. Is she a medical? She's not a medical doctor.
Not medical.
No, no.
Any other public participation? Any other public participation? Any other public participation? CNN, MHS Handbook. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. It's good to be back. Looking forward to welcoming our students back on Wednesday, September 1st. I say that every chance I get, just to make sure everybody knows that date. Review of the handbook. So if you recall, last year, we did a lot of updates, if you will, to the handbook to try to make it a little bit more, in my humble opinion, user-friendly. So we worked to really help make those groupings seem a little bit easier to access for our parents and students. This year, we have very few modifications to that. I'll go through each of the four that are listed out on the agenda that Mrs. Brant put together for us tonight. So pages 8 to 10 reflects the new bell schedules, and that is revised to support the new time of schooling for MHS, which is 8:00 in the morning till 2:35 p.m. in the afternoon. Any questions on the bell schedules? I'll go through one thing each time.
Any questions from the committee? Nope, move along.
All right. We added a description of the support that our adjustment counselors provide for students. We had noticed that that was not included in previous handbooks, although it did give a nice description of our guidance counseling department, so we added in there for student support information. On page 32, we updated, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I actually have a question about that.
Please, yes.
So I know that prior to this, as you just stated, the description of the relationship between the adjustment counselors and the students had not been spelled out. Has, is what it says here always been the case, that every student is assigned an adjustment counselor? And it's just incumbent on them to seek out? Because not every student uses the services of an adjustment counselor.
No, no, but they do separate the entire student body into their caseloads, and sometimes the connection between a student and an adjustment counselor is made by the student, and then other times it's facilitated by another adult in the building, like, for example, a guidance counselor or a nurse. And then it might also be facilitated directly by the adjustment counselor in other cases.
But the students are clear that they always have access to an adjustment counselor?
Oh, well.
Correct?
Answering that on behalf of the students, I would check with the students, and I will make sure that they're clear that they have access to that. It's a great point. I don't want to answer on their behalf without having asked them first, but maybe.
Yeah, Hattie, do you have anything to say about them?
First, we have to welcome Hattie.
We have to welcome Hattie. Yay!
Thank you for the warm welcome. That's a great point. I personally did not know that we had one-on-one adjustment counselors, so I think that that would be a great thing that we make sure students know, especially coming into this year, would be a great thing for students to know.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I knew that students always knew they had a guidance counselor. But I wasn't sure that they all knew that they had an adjustment counselor, so.
Absolutely. We have class meetings during the first few days of school, so we'll make sure that we build that information in and make sure that all the students are updated.
I was just informed about two or three weeks ago that, it's been a while now, but one of my classmates informed me that I actually had a guidance council when I was in school, and I just found out about it a couple of weeks ago.
We have your National Honor Society ribbon too. Never picked it up.
I'm a little behind. And that's a true story.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions on the adjustment counselor language or update? As always, this is, well, number one, it is very much a living document for us now. We can always revisit this during the year through a school committee meeting if we need to make updates, if policies come out. We've made it more electronic, we've made it electronic now so that we can make those updates very quickly. So if you notice anything in the language and you bring it to our attention after the fact, that's appreciated as well.
Thank you.
Page 32 has been updated with the new dress code policy, which was just passed this spring, so that's now also contained in the handbook, replacing the old policy. We removed policy 8.500, the face mask policy, in anticipation that the district is going to be updating that policy, I believe, tonight. So once that is updated, we can go one of two routes, and I'll work with Superintendent Bergeron on the preference of the committee. We can include that in the student handbook. We can use the district policy as the overarching policy, which we do with other policies as well, so. Yes, Ms. Hennessy?
If possible, I'm going to make a suggestion, though, that instead of having to change it in the handbook and make sure it's changed on the website, it may be smarter to just have a footnote in the handbook referencing the main policy on the main website, only from a standpoint, my concern would be that we may need to be making changes to this throughout the year, and my only concern would be that if for some reason there is a glitch and we don't change something, I don't want to have differing information. So that would be just a suggestion, not a have-to.
I think it makes sense.
So, just putting it out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this would be in correlation with the policy committee, but I did notice, now that we've changed how we deliver meals, as far as free, to the community, we do, you have the entire section starting on page 30 on food service charging and also on administration and free and reduced and all of that. And I know, I believe, Mr. Diaz, we still capture or try to capture, do we still, the free and reduce eligibility, but we don't have, well, not that we don't have to, but we're not charging, so.
Correct. We no longer collect the applications.
I mean, I know it references a policy, so, but then there's also procedural things in there, so.
Absolutely.
It just needs to be updated.
We could take a look. Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, and as you are correctly, you know, pointing out, that was a policy that we needed to institute, if you will, a little while ago.
Oh, no, no, I know why it was there.
Yes, I know, you know. So we were about ready to go back around on updates anyway, so I will just put that to the top of our update, okay? So, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Bowden, head and Joe.
So it's not really few, it's just piggybacking on this. Do we still capture that information?
We capture through a process called direct certification, which is something that the state informs us when somebody qualifies for assistance. And then that is, that information stays with us. We don't really use it right now for anything because, again, all of the, we don't have a fee for anything in the Marlboro Public Schools, and we also don't charge for meals. So, but we do retain that information.
But so you're getting it from the state as opposed to getting it from families filling out all those forms?
Correct.
Right. And what about AP exams? That is still a fee.
AP exams and?
If students are taking AP courses in order to sit for the exams, there's a fee attached to that.
There is. Yep, there is.
So that is one, the last remaining fee that we have, as far as I understand.
Yes, there is a fee. We do work with students and families that could use some assistance in order to make sure that the cost of the exam does not bar them from being able to take the exam, but you are correct.
Okay.
There is still a fee for that. So I can connect with Mr. Diaz on that, and we can, we can look at that, absolutely.
Just one point on that. We also use some of our Title IV funds to offset some of those fees for kids.
I knew that there wasn't a barrier, but if we're not capturing the information, sometimes there could be that disconnect, not really knowing which students might need the assistance. So I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Everybody was aligned. Thank you.
Any other questions? CNN, policy 8.50.
One more. He has one more. Dan's still there.
I do? No, no.
What?
No, I'm good.
No, he did dress code. Oh, was that all four?
I'm all set. I'm good. Thank you all.
Sorry.
You paying attention or what?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Policy 8.5.
Thank you. And thank you very much. So before you, you have policy 8.500. What we had done was recently, we had heard from MASC with a bit of an update, if you will, that felt like that would be a good thing to propose forward rather than maintaining one that was a little bit different, not massively different, but trying to keep language in a similar fashion. So I would ask for a suspension of the rules so that we could actually vote on this this evening, if possible, so that we could either move forward, deny whatever needs to be, so.
It's on the agenda, so if no one has objection, then we will just vote on it.
Do we have to vote to suspend the rules?
No, because it's on the agenda.
Oh, my God.
Any questions on policy 8.50? CNN, questions? I'll accept the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with policy 8.500, face mask policy.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Reports of subcommittees. Any reports? Any reports of subcommittees? Members forum. Don't know what.
Donations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you paying attention?
I guess I did miss that one. O'Carna Portraiture, Inc., early childhood center, Goodnow Brothers Elementary School, and Jarrick Elementary School.
$0.52, but, okay. You said 51.
$0.79.
No, the second one, you said 51.
$0.52.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Opposed, carries. Members' forum. Any members?
Oh, well...
Ms. Bowden-Henjo?
Thank you. So, a few things. One, proper greetings to Hattie. We're thrilled you're here with us this year, and I have been in conversation with Mrs., with Ms. Klein regarding an orientation for you and your colleagues. We're gonna, do you, I asked her, and she didn't have an answer for me yet, but do you have a sense of whether an afternoon or an evening meeting would be better for you guys?
I think with school, and after-school, and sports, and whatnot, I think evening might be better.
Okay. So, and she suggested that doing it on, like, teams would be an option versus having you guys to have to come back. Do you think that would be a better way of doing it, or would your preference be to meet live?
I think it really, I'd have to get in touch with my other peers, but I think, depends on what's best for people. Teams could be a good option, but...
Okay. So, I'm gonna kind of, once we get, I'll put out a couple of dates, but we're shooting for the second and third weeks of September, sometime in that area, to do informal orientation, answer questions, get to know each other, kind of thing, okay?
Appreciated.
Great, thanks. I had, shoot, oh, I wanted to just address superintendent's full evaluation, which we were not able to get to, at the end of the year last year. We are going to put on the next agenda, so that it's properly vetted. I was going to address it during members' forum tonight, but I thought it deserved to have its own agenda item. So, if we can have it on the next agenda, and then I will report out, we already did the actual findings, but this is the comments that members had submitted. Thank you.
Any other members want to be heard? Any other members? Mr. Crusoe?
This is just, probably sort of personal, but we talked about the website and updating the school committee portion of the website the other day, so if we could do that at some point in time, that would be...
Get a couple of things on there.
The photograph?
You get some stuff, we're gonna update it.
Yeah, and we need a new picture, which we can either do, is that what you meant, though?
That's kind of what I...
Yeah, yeah. We need to update it. I mean, we can do it tonight, if that's okay with other people.
I can take the picture.
Woo, okay. Okay, we can do that after, after the meeting.
Great. Any other members? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you very much.